It looks too long to be me, what do you mean?
I didn't know.
The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at arms.
In the House's sound session, all persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Kurt Scaly, Senior Pastor, Faith Baptist Church Fredericksburg, and remain standing for the Pledge of the Legionants to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for our very lives and freedoms. Indeed, we acknowledge that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Please help us moment by moment to be cognizant of your presence in our lives and in the affairs of people, and may that awareness literally shape the way that we think. Our Father, I ask specifically for your blessings upon the members of this assembly here today. Thank you for their collective sacrifice for the good of the people of Virginia. Please protect them, bless their families during these days when they are apart from them. We ask for a measure of your wisdom, believing your promise that if we admit our lack of wisdom and humbly seek your face, you will grant us your perspective. We long for you to teach us your perspective. Help us to see it and act accordingly and courageously. Give each one of us today a sober sense of our accountability before you in serving the people of our respective constituencies. Help us to lead with compassion, deliberation, humility, and commitment to truth. May the enormity of our task and the potential consequences of our decisions compel us to pray more fervently, love more generously, and seek your truth more earnestly. Teach us to embrace the most noble and compelling motivation of all, to love the Lord our God with all of our hearts, souls, minds, and strength, and may that love find practical context even today in the way that we love, serve, and respect each other. And our Father, I ask for a special blessing on every individual person who is in this room. Thank you for their sacrifice and service. Bless them, please, and bless their families. And I ask all of this in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members will answer roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. The clerk will close the roll.
Madam Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Monday, January 20, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to the provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the First Morning Hour Order of Business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First Morning Hour Order of Business pursuant to House Rule 40, the Speaker asks that you use your Request to Speak button in order to be recognized. I have no announcements.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Miares.
Madam Speaker, I stand for a motion for unanimous consent of this chamber. Madam Speaker, permission to speak to the motion?
Delegate Miares, you have the floor.
I ask the esteemed body to show me a little graciousness. I lost track of time on Friday, thought the deadline was 5:00, and attempted to introduce this legislation at 4:00, and the deadline was 3:00. But this is a legislation that would simply instruct the Board of Housing and Community Development to revise the Uniform Statewide Building Code for the installation of keyboxes at certain strategic structures to allow law enforcement easier access to certain buildings. It's in response to the tragedy that happened on May 31 in Virginia Beach, and it's a pleasure of this House to grant unanimous consent for this tardy introduction of this bill.
Jason Miares requests unanimous consent of the House to introduce HB...
Your Honor, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate Miares.
There is no bill number assigned, so I have a copy of it yet because legislative services did not accept it because it was past the deadline. I apologize.
No problem. All those in favor of granting unanimous consent shall say aye. Those opposed? Unanimous consent is granted. Delegate Miares. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, I rise for an introduction, two introductions.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, today is William &amp; Mary Day, and today is a day that we celebrate an alma mater of a nation. And today, I think they're in the gallery. We have some 40 students who have yet again made the journey from Williamsburg to Richmond to experience this session and participate in our democracy. Today, they've had numerous meetings with legislators to discuss higher education priorities and give their young people an opportunity to work with each and every one of us and the body down the hall. And so if they are in the gallery, and I'd like for the students of William &amp; Mary to stand. They're not. Okay, there they are. I'd also like for any alum of William &amp; Mary who might be a member of the House to please stand. So on behalf of all the alums here, Delegate Mullen, who represents Williamsburg, I hope it be the pleasure of the body to give William &amp; Mary a warm House welcome.
It's wonderful to see all the William &amp; Mary students, and welcome to the Capitol. Hope you enjoy your day. Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, the next introduction is of some folks who represent a diverse group, coalition of law enforcement businesses, nonprofits, family members from all across Virginia, and those are the folks from Drive Smart. If they're in the gallery, would they please rise? Today, we are joined by this group who is working fervently to address the epidemic of distracted driving on Virginia roadways, and they are here to meet with Virginia legislators to support effective enforceable hands-free driving legislation, and I hope that they would be extended a warm House welcome from everyone here. Thank you so much.
It's wonderful to see the group from Drive Smart as well as law enforcement. Thank you for what you're doing here today, and enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Kriesic.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Kriesic, you have the floor.
In the gallery today is Jake Klonowski and his three children. His wife's an Air Force Colonel stationed in Virginia, and they're here pleased to that we ratified the Equal Rights Amendment. And I also want to say that I just found out that their daughter, who goes to St. Luke's Day School, is the same day school that my daughter went to many, many years ago, and it's a great, it's a great education they give there. And I just wanted to ask the body if we'd give them a warm House welcome.
Hope you enjoy your day in the Capitol. Thank you for being with us today. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I'm advised that in the gallery or among the Capitol grounds is the Virginia State Conference for the NAACP. I would hope that this body would grant them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Virginia State Conference of NAACP. Hope you enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Thanks for joining us. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Converse Flower.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, joining us in the Capitol, we have the Hampton Roads Realtor Association. If they're in the gallery, please ask them to rise. The Hampton Roads Realtor Association is a professional organization dedicated to advocating on behalf of the interests of private property owners and promoting excellence in real estate business practices. The Hampton Roads Realtor Association, or HRA, is the largest Realtor trade association in southeastern Virginia with more than 3,500 Realtors and 800 affiliate members. This association is here for their day on the Hill, where they are busy meeting with legislators to advocate for their industry. As a Realtor myself, it is my special honor to ask you to give them a warm House welcome. Thank you.
Welcome to the Hampton Road Realtors Association, and we hope they're enjoying their day in Capitol Square, wherever they are. Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate LaRocque.
Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate LaRocque, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In the gallery today are Gwyneth McMurty, McMurtry, excuse me, Director of Education at the Westmoreland Davis Memorial Foundation and the Morven Park Center for Civic Impact, and 14 Loudoun County students. Could you please rise? Thank you. The Center for Civic Impact reaches over 8,000 Loudoun County Public School students each year to help them develop civic skills such as voice, research, responsibility, and action, and to learn about their government and how to become active and engaged in their communities. Periodically, the center partners with Loudoun County Parks and Recreation to organize a field trip to Richmond for Loudoun County Public School students for them to see these skills in action. Madam Speaker, I'm sure that we all recognize the benefits of civics and education, and I had the great time talking with these impressive young students just earlier today. Ask that you join me in giving them and their staff from Morven Park Center for Civics Impact a warm House welcome. Thank you.
It's wonderful to see the Loudoun students here, and thank you for participating in the process and being here. I hope it's a great experience for you. Welcome. Delegate from Sussex County, Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise for an introduction and an announcement.
Delegate Tyler, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, we have correctional officers here at the General Assembly, meeting with their legislators concerning various pieces of legislation that is of greater interest to them. I am sure that many of you in this chamber have had an opportunity to see and to speak to some of them. The correctional officers here today are from Greensville Correction Center, Dear Fear Correctional Center, Sussex 1 and Sussex 2, Lunaburg Correctional Center, Indian Creek, St. Bribes, and Virginia Correction Center for Women at MCV and the State Farm Complex. I believe some of them are up in the gallery. I ask you to please join me in giving a warm welcome to their, to these individuals for their dedicated public safety professionals who sacrifice so much for us each day.
It's an honor and privilege for us to have you all here with us as correctional officers. Thank you for putting your lives on the line for us as first responders every single day.
Now, for my introduction, I mean for my announcement, tomorrow here on the Capitol grounds is Brunswick Stew Day. And for the new members, this is an exciting day for us here because we get to eat some Brunswick stew from the native area of Brunswick County. And so tomorrow, please stop by the tents and enjoy some Brunswick stew from my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Tyler. Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am pleased to welcome friends and neighbors from the Ark of the New River Valley. They are here in the gallery, and while our wonderful correctional officers are departing, I would ask that our friends from the Ark of the New River Valley would stand so that they can be recognized. The friends and neighbors from the Ark of the New River Valley are here advocating for House Bill 49 regarding inclusive education and for fully funding Priority One of the DD waiting list and for raising the rates for developmental disability services. I would hope it be the pleasure of the House to give them a warm House welcome.
It's always wonderful to have the Ark folks here, and in particular, the New Little River Valley. Thank you for being here with us today. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of so many. Delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Corey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Corey, you have the floor.
Thank you. So today, I would like to recognize the lobbying team from Virginia Clean Cities. And they, hopefully, they're in the gallery. If they're not, we're still going to talk about them. Oh, great, I'm glad you're here. The Virginia Clean Cities Coalition is a statewide nonprofit focused on advancing air quality improvement, economic opportunity, and energy security through the deployment of alternative fuel vehicles and infrastructure, education programs, and other petroleum reduction activities. They also have a state side at JMU, running a wide range of vehicle and infrastructure deployment and education products, projects for governments and foundations. I'd like to add that I first met this organization many more years than I can admit. When we were first talking about cities and counties taking a pledge, now we are way beyond the pledge, so thank you so much for being here. Please give them a warm welcome.
Thank you. Delegate Runyon.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Runyon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, I'd like to note this is my first time speaking on the floor, and so if I am not so eloquent, my apologies, please. But I'd like to recognize LRED. LRED, or better known as Illegal Reform for People with Intellectual and Developmentally Disabled and the Ark of Virginia. And they are here today on behalf of their work for criminal justice reform for the developmentally disabled. I'd like for them to rise and thank them for attending. Please join me in welcoming them to the Capitol.
Wonderful to see LRED and the Ark. Again, thank you for being here, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of so many important issues and populations. The clerk will report. HJR 161.
HJR 161, Election of a Supreme Court of Virginia Justice Circuit Court Judges, General District Court Judges, and Juvenile and Domestic Relation District Court Judges. This is available on iHOT LIS. It's on your desk and in the back room.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero. The resolution is agreed to. The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey, will communicate the action of the House of Delegates to the Senate and request its concurrence. The House will be at ease. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegate Collins. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested calendar to the regular calendar, and I have received no such requests.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is the announcement of requests by members for legislation to go by for the day and the subsequent motion by the majority leader. There is a request for House Joint Resolution 4 on page seven of the calendar to go by for the day.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the legislation that was announced by the clerk go by for the day.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves up HJR 4. It's announced by the clerk, go by for the day. If many in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed? The motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is recognition of members' requests for points of personal privilege. The Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak button to be recognized.
Delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Wilt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the point of personal privilege.
Delegate Wilt, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, if I could ask some assistance from a page, please? Whoever's up next? If you could deliver that, if Delegate Keen, would you, you know Delegate Keen, would you take that hand, please? Madam Speaker, members of the body, you know, the first week of session, we had the Agro Business Council. Many of us were there. It was a great event. And our esteemed farmer from Fairfax won one award that, don't open it yet, Delegate Keen, because I like to draw the body's attention to the package itself, the paper. That is repurposed paper, and I would ask that you open it gently because you can use it again. Wrap another, wrap another gift with it, or, you know, trip to the outhouse. And now, and the string, Madam Speaker, that's Baylor twine, okay? Now, and you can repurpose that, Delegate, tying up a gate at your chickens you got there at your place there where you live. You can use it to tie your pickup door shut if the latch is not working. So hang on to that. And so, but also, go ahead and open your package. It just felt like the delegate really needed to dress the part as a farmer from Fairfax, so, so, yeah. Madam Speaker, and I would ask the gentleman to wear those in good health as he continues on his farming endeavors in his district. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Wilt. Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Gilbert, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, for years now, especially this year, we've heard a steady drumbeat of rhetoric from Democrats in Virginia about gun violence. And I wanted to point out something to the public that this morning, in a House Subcommittee, there was a bill addressing gun violence, very specifically addressing gun violence, and gun violence that is committed by some pretty bad people. This bill, would, Madam Speaker, have increased the penalties for the use of, and I'm reading from the bill, any pistol, shotgun, rifle, or other firearm, or display such weapon in a threatening manner in the commission of or attempting to commit the following crimes: murder, rape, forcible sodomy, inanimate or animate object sexual penetration, robbery, carjacking, burglary, malicious wounding, and aggravated malicious wounding. That bill was summarily defeated in the Public Safety Subcommittee this morning, Madam Speaker. A bill that, despite all of the calls for addressing gun violence that is aimed specifically at people committing violence with a gun, was killed in short order. Madam Speaker, I'm sure as the session progresses and we see the various agendas associated with how we treat criminals versus how we treat law-abiding citizens who only choose to arm themselves for very legitimate and lawful purposes, as we see those agendas progress, I'm sure we're going to see more things like this, where the calls for stopping gun violence really ring hollow. Because when someone actually commits gun violence in the Commonwealth of Virginia, it would seem that we don't really want to address that, or that House Democrats don't really want to address that. And I think it's important that people see this emerging agenda, that they see when gun violence is aimed at criminals, that it apparently is not part of the agenda pending here, but when law-abiding people, where there's little nexus between their behavior and how they live their lives and how they choose to arm themselves, and the bills that are now pending before the legislature in terms of what they hope to achieve, I just think we're going to see more of that, Madam Speaker. And I regret that, and I hate that, and I wonder if truly gun violence is the, stopping gun violence is the objective of the bills now pending before the legislature. If we're going to kill bills that actually do just that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Fauquier, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yesterday, 22,000 Second Amendment supporters visited our Capitol. The majority of them were well armed, they were polite, they were orderly, they were peaceful. 16,000 people outside the fence. None of them was arrested for violence. When they left, they picked up their trash and generally cleaned up after themselves. This was a remarkable exercise in democracy that we all should be proud of. This is the Second Amendment community in Virginia and our nation. All colors, all creeds, they obeyed the laws and rules laid out before them. When the majority and the governor threw them curveballs by changing the rules, they obeyed them. Not one weapon was confiscated at the metal detectors. Those who were armed stayed outside the secure area. They came to lobby and were respectful and polite. I don't know what else our constituents can do to show they're trustworthy. They obey the law, and they handle their firearms responsibly. We have seen this demonstrated at hundreds of gatherings across the Commonwealth without a single incident of violence. These are the These are the same people that the majority seeks to disarm. As we saw with a series of votes in the Committee this morning, the majority is far more interested in punishing the same law-abiding Virginians than they are in punishing criminals. Just this morning, the majority killed a bill that would have increased the penalty for committing a felony with a gun. There are millions of firearms in the Commonwealth, owned by millions of Virginians. I understand that some of our colleagues are afraid of firearms. They're foreign to them. They didn't grow up around them and they don't understand them. I get that. But, Madam Speaker, I hope the majority will learn from yesterday. 22,000 of our friends, neighbors, family, and coworkers, and nothing happened. The media predicted chaos. Some of our colleagues said they feared for their lives from these people. Madam Speaker, I would suggest that perhaps the majority has misjudged these people, our fellow Virginians. I hope that they will consider that as we go forward and consider legislation that would take away their Second Amendment rights in the near future. Thank you.
The delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I just don't understand how the delegate from Fauquier could possibly say that these crowds show the true will of the people of Virginia. Because it's not the thousands of armed and masked men outside of the Capitol we should be paying attention to to assess the mandate of the voting public. It is the makeup of this current body and the one down the hall. So take a look at the hundred or so of us gathered here on the House floor. We had elections in November that represented the true will of the people, and that number of voters is far higher than any masses gathered on Main Street or Franklin Street. 2,388,213 voters in November. And those who want action on gun violence to save lives voted in larger numbers than those who want the status quo. Now, for years, a day honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. has been co-opted by a minority of angry and determined instigators seeking to distract from his unique and profound legacy. And yet, we on this side of the aisle have persisted. We lean on his words from his letter from a Birmingham jail when he said, quote, "We know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed." And for years now, we have heard the word "wait." It rings in the ear of every black person with piercing familiarity. This wait has almost always meant "never." We must come to see with one of our distinguished jurists that justice too long delayed is justice denied. Because there comes a time when the cup of endurance runs over and men are no longer willing to be plunged into the abyss of despair. I hope you sirs can understand our legitimate and unavoidable impatience. And that despair has extended to those who demand action on gun violence to save Virginian lives and the lives of our fellow Americans. And we have been impatient for far too long, but that persistence is about to be remedied. For 13 years, the town of Blacksburg and the community of Virginia Tech have been impatiently waiting for action. The shooter of the 2007 massacre had a teacher who tried to raise the alarm of impending trouble. Her name is Lucinda Roy. She wrote a book that I revisit often. It's titled "No Right to Remain Silent." The implication being that when you are in that abyss of despair, Madam Speaker, you must not stay quiet but instead persistently speak out until that change occurs. She writes, "Once there was a small town in southwest Virginia, one of the most beautiful places in the world. Then one day, a terrible thing happened. And afterwards, we said to each other, as people do, 'How could this ugliness have happened here to us, knowing it would have been easier to bear had it happened somewhere else to other people?'" And the lucky ones who weren't in that location said, "How could this ugliness have happened over there to them?" But in their hearts, even the lucky people knew that this unfortunate question belonged to them as well. Because what happened over there could happen anywhere. Because we are always they in the end. But this was a large uncomfortable thought which took up too much room in a world that is always chronically preoccupied, better to remain silent. People whispered, afraid of attorneys, afraid of the media, afraid of jeopardizing the rights they treasured, afraid of what it would cost. So the thing just floated in the air, an ugly hook of a question waiting for something to snag upon it. It hooked other questions so that soon there was a series of them hovering in the air above our heads. And people, when they looked up, saw a necklace of sorts, Madam Speaker. You could say a noose. Personally, Madam Speaker, the cause that partially brought me to this hallowed chamber, the death of a great love, now has come full circle. I am happy and madly in love again. And would you believe it, after years of questioning my faith, she has brought me back into the church. And Sunday morning, our pastor's sermon included a parable Jesus told in Luke Chapter 18, the parable of the persistent widow. He said, "In a certain town, there was a judge who neither feared God nor cared what people thought." And sometimes, members of this body are accused of the same. And there was a widow in that town who kept coming to him with the plea, 'Grant me justice against my adversary.' For some time, he refused, but he finally said to himself, "Even though I don't fear God or care what people think, yet because this widow keeps bothering me, I will seek that she gets justice so that she won't eventually come and attack me." And the Lord said, "Listen to what the unjust judge says. And will not God bring about justice for his chosen ones who cry out to him day and night? Will he keep putting them off? I tell you, he will see that they get justice, and quickly. However, when the Son of Man comes, will he find faith on this earth?" So when we see the thousands of people outside, many of whom aren't even citizens of this great Commonwealth, and speaking to the point about blown-up or manufactured dangers, I can tell you that when you go to the message boards for white nationalists and white supremacists, when you see now that they are being date and time specific and wanting to shed blood in order to try and start either a civil war or a race war, all of the concerns made by this body and by Capitol Police and by the governor's administration were incredibly well-founded. Not for the majority of the tens of thousands who showed up, but for a particular sect who are bent on trying to start trouble and thank God nothing bad happened. I would completely reject the notion that we were over-prepared or over-analyzed or overstated what could have happened yesterday, and I thank my Maker above that we all are back here peacefully once again. But when we still see these thousands of people outside, I still have faith. We have faith. We remain persistent. Because there is a silent majority that did not show up on the Capitol grounds yesterday because bullies have made our sacred space temporarily unsafe. That majority is millions of Virginians who remain persistent and desperately want to keep their faith in us. And to them, I say, "Don't worry. That faith will be fulfilled because we will not be deterred in our mission to save lives." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Rally turns raucous. Small group of protesters broke off from a larger group and blew by cops on the steps and others joined in. Thirty-one arrests. No, that wasn't yesterday. That was a headline, March 3, 2012, on an article regarding an abortion rights protest of under 1,000 participants. In contrast, yesterday, 22,000 citizens lobbying for the protection of their Second Amendment rights and the ability to protect themselves and their loved ones came together. No reported instances of overtaking Capitol Police, only one arrest of someone that wasn't even affiliated with the protection of Second Amendment rights. To 2012 protesters, it was a peaceful protest of citizens. But yesterday, the attendees were referred to in many cases using blanket statements like activists, white nationalists, militia members, I guess in today, bullies. But who I saw out there yesterday, who I talked to? NASA engineers, fast food employees, female competitive shooters, lawyers, doctors, retired law enforcement, and our U.S. veterans. Individuals that have never participated in politics before until their Second Amendment rights were deemed in threat. But they get referred to as extremists. But interestingly, what doesn't get referred to as extreme? A comment by a congressman suggesting that the governor may need to use the National Guard to enforce a gun ban. Banning pistols used in many shooting sports competitively across the nation. Banning items like muzzle brakes, whose sole purpose is to decrease recoil, thereby decreasing the potential for firearm accidents. And banning shooting ranges specializing in the education and practice of safe firearm use doesn't seem to be considered extreme by this body. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to express my appreciation for the truly peaceful act of assembly demonstrated by those in support of their Second Amendment rights yesterday and apologize for any hypocrisy that one of them may have felt. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Samira, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, what would the Reverend do in our Capitol if he were alive yesterday? Many thoughts come to mind, but the theme was clear to me. Martin Luther King Jr. would be in the Capitol, standing tall, demanding justice for all. He would be on the front line of the battle against systemic poverty regardless of the obstacles. The Reverend was always at risk of getting killed. Violence against black civil rights activists leaders has always been deadly. Al-Hajj Malik al-Shabaab, better known as Malcolm X, was murdered by gunfire in 1965. Martin Luther King Jr. was gunned down in 1968. Yesterday, the demonstrations attracted the attention of neo-Nazis, alt-right trolls, white supremacists, and other racist fringe extremists who view guns as an absolute need to advance their violent agenda. They abuse the intent of the Second Amendment. It's clear that white supremacy is on the rise here in Virginia, the U.S. and globally. Data shows that white nationalist propaganda, demonstrations, and violence have all increased at dangerous rates since 2015. The man who took 50 Muslim lives in Chris Christ Church produced a manifesto dripping with white supremacist ideology that connected directly to the U.S.'s white supremacist movement. His rhetoric mirrored the radicalizing language found on racist message boards and neo-Nazi sites across the Internet. The same language shut down Charlottesville schools for two days earlier last year. What has many of us most agitated is not the fringe elements' intimidation tactics, but the fact that these fringe armed demonstrators have hijacked such an important day, the one day a year when we are to thoroughly reflect on the legacy of the great Martin Luther King Jr. Truly, MLK would agree that the fringe activists were only distracting from his core message about justice, poverty, and universal human value. So I want to recommit this legislative body to that message and remind us all what should really be on our minds. The existence of poverty in the U.S. should not be accepted as a necessary evil or insoluble problem, but should be considered a crisis requiring emergency measures. "It is a matter of will and priorities, not a matter of resources," Martin Luther King Jr. said. MLK understood that a message of racial justice that does not include economic justice is not a message of racial justice at all. He knew that progressivism is an empty promise if it does not address what he called the three evils of racism, poverty, and militarism. Indeed, we can go from issue to issue, whether it's healthcare, housing, education, climate change, wages, job equality, job quality, or criminal justice, and see that there is an economic and political power structure in place that entrenches the disparities between well-off Virginians and those who are continually left behind by the system. When MLK says that eradicating poverty is a matter of will and priorities, not a matter of resources, he's saying that these economic and political power structures cannot be disrupted without the will and courage to change the status quo, or as we call it in the Commonwealth, the Virginia Way. When he says that eradicating poverty is a matter of will and priorities, not a matter of resources, he's saying that when we live in the best state for business and the most economically successful nation in human history, we shouldn't believe anyone who tells us that we don't have the tools or resources necessary to lift up all marginalized people. This session, I have introduced new bills that I believe will go a long way in serving the goals laid out by MLK, specifically in the areas of housing and healthcare. However, their fate in this legislative body is determined by, is to be determined because in institutions like ours, the entrenched powers that can be override any attempt at progress. So here's my challenge to everyone here today and to all Virginians who are working earnestly to make this Commonwealth a better place for all. Do we have the courage to make good on MLK's mission? Do we have the courage to take the necessary steps for our constituents, even when it is politically hard? Do we have the courage to recognize the totality of MLK's message for the world, or will we revert back to the safe retelling of history that allows us to hold up MLK's legacy while the issues he raised over 50 years ago remain unchecked? I believe that we can be compassionate, and I know that now is the time to get it done. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
As the Senate has not yet acted on the joint resolution, we will move on to the calendar. The Clerk will call the calendar at this time.
House Calendar for January 21. House Bills on Third Reading Uncontested Calendar. There is one bill, House Bill 316.
Delegate from Clark. Delegate Goditis. Shall the bill, sorry, shall the bill pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 99, eyes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Eyes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bills on Third Reading Regular Calendar. House Bill 282, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 4 of Title 10.1, a section numbered 10.1, 418.10, relating to scenic river designation Mari River.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 90, nays nine, abstentions zero.
Eyes 90, nays nine, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 408, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1, 439.12, colon, oh five, of the Code of Virginia relating to green job creation tax credit sunset date.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 64, nays 35, abstentions zero.
Eyes 64, nays 35, abstentions zero. The bill passes. Sergeant in Arms.
Madam Speaker, a message from the Senate.
Senator Edwards.
Madam Speaker, I've been directed by the President of the Senate to inform the House of Deputies that pursuant to Rule 5 of HJR 99, the Senate has agreed to hold the special and continuing joint order relating to judicial elections on Wednesday, January 22, 2020.
Thank you, Senator.
House Bill 466, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1, 3703.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to business license waivers.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 98, nays one, abstentions zero.
Eyes 98, nays one, abstentions zero. The bill passes. The bill passes.
House Bill 590, a bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1439.12:04 of the Code of Virginia relating to tax credit for participating landlords eligible housing areas.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 63, nays 36, abstentions 0.
Ayes 63, nays 36, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
House Bill 1145, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 10.1411.5 relating to designation of a segment of the Pound River as a state scenic river.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 88, nays 11, abstentions 0.
Ayes 88, nays 11, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I move that House Bill 316 on page 1 of today's calendar be reconsidered so that -- today's sort of our first day here, and I know that a couple of people were a little bit delayed getting to their seats to cast a vote, so I move that we reconsider that bill so that all the members have an opportunity to cast a vote.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion to reconsider, passes. Shall the bill, HB 316, shall the bill pass? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Ayes 99, nays 0, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
House Bills on Second Reading Uncontested Calendar. House Bill 210, a bill to amend and reenact Section 10.12211.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to historical African-American cemeteries, Montgomery County and City of Radford, reported from Agriculture, Chesapeake, and Natural Resources with amendments.
The delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the amendment is agreed to.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill, the amendments first include an additional cemetery in Montgomery County and the plots that would be protected by the Department of Historic Resources. House Bill 210 continues what has now been a multi-year effort led by the delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn, to protect historic African-American cemeteries. House Bill 210 adds three cemeteries, two in Montgomery County and one in the city of Radford, to the list that will receive state funding in order to make sure that those historic African-American cemeteries are maintained. I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 4 of the calendar. House Bill 314, a bill to amend and reenact Section 10.12211.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to historical African-American cemeteries, Loudoun County, reported from Agriculture, Chesapeake, and Natural Resources.
Delegate from Clark, Delegate Goditis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, HB 314 is a bill to add the Mount Zion Historical Cemetery in Aldi, Virginia, to that list of African-American cemeteries eligible for preservation funding. The cemetery is the resting place for 33 African-Americans, people who were tragically and immorally enslaved by people who were following the accepted law of the day. Thank God we have the power to change bad laws to protect people. Madam Speaker, it is past time for us to honor those enslaved and free African-Americans buried in the Mount Zion Cemetery. I hope it is the will of the body to engross and pass this bill to its third reading.
House Bill 135, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 59.1201 and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 59.1200.2 relating to the Virginia Consumer Protection Act, Assignment of Right to Receive Veterans' Benefits, reported from Labor and Commerce with Substitute.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Mieres.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Mieres.
Madam Speaker, HB 135 provides that any person who commits an unfreudulent act in the assignment of rights of a veteran's pension or disability benefit, that then that would be actionable under the Virginia Consumer Protection Act, and if that assignment is prohibited or voided under specific federal anti-assignment acts, this is to protect our veterans and give them a tool in the toolbox for acts that are already not proper in their federal law. It's a pleasure of this body to move the bill.
House Bill 143, a bill to repeal the fourth enactment of Chapter 442 of the 2014 Acts of Assembly relating to unemployment compensation voluntarily leaving employment to a company military spouse, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Powhatan, Delegate Ware.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 143 would repeal the sunset clause on the unemployment insurance coverage for a military-trailing spouse for unemployment compensation. I will say parenthetically that I voted against this measure initially, but as was predicted, the financial effect on the trust fund has been minimal, and therefore I believe it is well for us to continue this policy, and I move the bill being engrossed and passed to its third reading.
House Bill 150.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate Cole.
Could House Bill 143 go to the regular calendar after engrossment?
Delegate Cole requests that HB 143 moves to the regular calendar after engrossment. All those in favor say aye. HB 143, Delegate Cole, will be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment.
House Bill 154, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 38.21316.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to credits for reinsurance, reported from Labor and Commerce with Substitute.
Delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Kilgore.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, this bill comes at request of the State Corporation Commission Bureau of Insurance, and it revises the reinsurance article of the Insurance Code, and reinsurance is simply insurance for insurance companies for extraordinary losses. This conforms Virginia laws to some federal laws that have been passed. Hope it be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 509, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 59.1444.2 and 59.1444.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to security freezes on credit reports, elimination of fees, reported from Labor and Commerce.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 509 removes the fee for placing a security freeze on your credit report. When we originally passed security freeze legislation in 2008, we set that fee at $10. In 2018, we reduced that to 15, and I was really excited to finally get it down to zero so that working families across Virginia could go ahead and protect their identity from identity theft without having to pay a fee. Alas, the federal government beat us to the punch, and they made it free for everybody in 2019. So what started off with what I thought was a really awesome bill now just is a code cleanup bill to make sure that we are consistent with federal statutes, but, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, if that federal legislation ever goes away, please rest assured, we in the Commonwealth are now protected. I would move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bills are engrossed and passed on to the third reading.
House Bills on Second Reading Regular Calendar. House Bill 38, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 59.1310.3 and 59.1310.5 of the Code of Virginia relating to the operation of tanning facilities, use of tanning devices by persons under the age of 18 prohibited, reported from Labor and Commerce.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, this bill is to promote public health by banning tanning bed use for minors. Currently, those that are under the age of 18 require a parental approval, and then they can go forward with using tanning beds. The damaging effects of ultraviolet radiation are undisputed. Some of the major consequences include premature skin aging, immune system impairment, and risk of skin cancer formation. About 35% of 17-year-old girls have used a tanning bed in the past year, and many experts believe this is why skin cancer is the second most common form of cancer in young people aged 15 to 29 years old. The current law needs to be changed so that we have nobody under the age of 18 receiving tanning bed ultraviolet radiation. My bill would institute a ban on indoor tanning for minors and protect our children from these cancers and the practices that cause them. Thank you.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Hark upon the gale, Madam Speaker. I would ask if the gentleman from Herndon might be able to rise for a couple of questions about this very important bill.
Will the delegate rise?
Madam Speaker, I rise.
Delegate Mullin, he will. You have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the gentleman from Herndon, as the newly-appointed chairman of the Ball Caucus, I don't really know how to use these tanning beds. How does somebody do that?
Well, apparently you sit in one of them, and, Madam Speaker--
Yes, Delegate Samira, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, may I respond? Yes. Madam Speaker, I would say that you should try going to one of these tanning beds and placing yourself in one of them and letting the ultraviolet burn you. I don't think the -- I don't think your skin would, on your head, be affected much. It would still look very beautiful.
Delegate Mullin, do you have a further question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would thank the delegate, Madam Speaker, but I guess I would have a follow-up question. Does the delegate know what kind of outfit I should be wearing when we -- what kind of outfit I should be wearing when I get into a tanning bed?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, the shortest shorts, and make sure that his bald spot is still fresh and clean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Fauquier, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the gentleman from Herndon rise for a question?
Will the delegate rise?
Madam Speaker, I am.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask the gentleman, is it not true that current law basically bans minors except when a parent deems that it would be all right? Say if somebody, a young lady, has a prom in the middle of February that she would like to get nice and tan, are we taking that away from her?
Madam Speaker, my response would be to the delegate that, you know, most people are not informed on the impacts of ultraviolet radiation on skin. Melanoma is a serious disease. Researchers agree that tanning beds are unequivocally harmful for minors. They recently, in the International Agency for Research on Cancer, recently re-categorized tanning bed radiation as category 1 carcinogenic to humans. So to answer the question directly, yes, it would prevent the minor from getting tanning bed services.
I think the gentleman.
Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the delegate from Fairfax yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I rise for a question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask the gentleman, you know, there are many different colors, many different flavors of people. There's white, there's black, but people like him and I would like a coffee with two creams. Three creams. There you go, lighting it up. So if folks want to be somewhere in between and be this coffee with two or three creams, what do you tell these folks who want to achieve this color? Of greatness.
Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, I would say we could take a lot of suggestions from the experts in the Middle East to let us know exactly how that works out. I will say that I think they would run into a lot of trouble. This color is very beautiful, and we have a hard time getting everybody else to have the same colors.
Will the gentleman yield for a further question, Madam Speaker?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
Delegate will yield.
Madam Speaker, for my final question, I would ask the gentleman that has largely believed that, you know, Jesus was probably the color of a coffee with two or three creams, and people would probably want to be like that divine entity. What would you tell those folks who are trying to be closer to God?
Yes, Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, I would respond by saying they should marry a wonderful Palestinian lady in the case of a man, or in the case of a woman, the exact opposite, and they should -- they probably could get a little bit of that color going for Jesus. Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Samira, was there a motion? Madam Speaker?
I motioned and gross, yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the gentleman from Herndon rise for a question?
Will the delegate rise?
Madam Speaker, I rise for a question.
Delegate Samira rises.
Would the gentleman agree that there's a lot of information already currently available that instructs people that this may have an effect on their skin and the medical circumstances that could be created from using a tanning bed too much?
Madam Speaker, I would say that, to answer the delegate's question, that is not currently the case, and thus our laws need to reflect this research that is founded pretty powerfully that skin cancer under the age of 18 is growing, and that we need to protect our minors from carcinogenics in general.
Would the gentleman yield for one last question? Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
Delegate will yield. Delegate Byron.
Does the gentleman think that women should be able to do with their body what they want in a tanning bed?
We have laws on the -- Madam Speaker, we have laws on the book that are to protect minors, and this is just another one of those laws that would protect minors.
Thank you. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor-- Madam Speaker. Add my request to speak right on. Yes. Delegate Suffolk, Delegate Brewer. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Madam Speaker, I do not yield for another question.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 56, a bill to amend and reenact Section 40.128.9 of the Code of Virginia relating to the minimum wage tipped employees, reported from Labor and Commerce with amendments.
Delegate from Manassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 56 aims to close a loophole whereby certain employees, particularly at our airports in northern Virginia, are prohibited by federal law from soliciting tips but are classified by their employers as tipped employees and paid less than minimum wage. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 440, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 56-419.3 relating to railroads, freight train crew requirements, civil penalty, reported from Labor and Commerce.
Delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Heretic.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 440 codifies the current railroad pr----
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 440 codifies the current railroad practice of employing not less than two members of each freight train operating in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This bill comes in the absence of federal rulemaking, which was withdrawn after three and a half years of study last May, following the adjournment of the Assembly, and comes at the request of various stakeholders in the railroad industry who prefer to see the trains running through our communities staffed by not less than two people as a matter of public safety. Respectfully move to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Memorial Resolutions. House Joint Resolution 4 has gone by for the day. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate O'Rourke?
Parliamentary Inquiry.
Delegate O'Rourke, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I would ask, given that the House adopted HJR 161 calling for judicial elections today, and the Senate action has been communicated back to us, their resolution says that elections will be tomorrow. At which juncture will we be having those elections, today or tomorrow?
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the special and continuing joint order scheduled for today pursuant to Rule 5 of HJR 99 be postponed until Wednesday, January 22, 2020.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the special and continuing joint order scheduled for today pursuant to Rule 5, HJR 99, be postponed until Wednesday, January 22. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, will communicate the action of this body, of the House delegates to the Senate, and request its concurrence at this time. The House will be at ease.